All these things on my desk here. We have Suffolk County with us tonight. Hey, microphone, can you guys hear me okay out of here? John is with us. Chief Lute. How are you? Good to see you. Well, you start with a forum to allow anybody to have any concerns from the public with respect to public safety. Chief, you want to give a brief report?
Yes. Just a couple of things tonight. We're being wary of pedestrian safety. We're asking everyone to drive safely and slowly. Try to remember that in the downtown area as we start to build up in volume. We have cars on both sides of the street. Some people don't pay strict attention to the crosswalks. We want to make sure we don't hit anyone. School-aged children are now going to be out at night playing after dinner. So let's expect that. Expect that they'll be running around in the street playing. We have a lot of issues going on with unlocked cars. Subjects stealing from those cars. And I think John will concur. They're saying that 95-plus percent of those cars are unlocked. So people are just going up and pulling the handle. And if it's open, they go in the car and they steal. Resident parking permits, we began enforcement on those March 15th. So check your stickers, make sure they're in date. Confusion. Sometimes there's a little confusion as to who to call when you have an emergency. If it's a true emergency or is a life threat, call 911 immediately and then call us afterward. There's a chance that we might get there a little bit sooner to help you. We're right here in the Village. And the patrol cars might be involved in something else further away. So do that. Call 911 first. If it's an emergency, then call us. John?
No, if I could just add something. Vehicles, absolutely. We've had a lot of larcenies being committed, items being stolen out of vehicles throughout Suffolk County, not just in this general area. So yes, please, lock your vehicles in your own driveways. Keep them locked. Do not leave the keys in there, right? We're finding a lot of vehicles that have been stolen with people leaving their key fobs or keys within the vehicles. Now, it has been brought to my attention that some people might know that your key fob is in the vehicle based on the position of the rearview mirror sometimes on a lot newer cars or the side view mirrors, okay? So just keep that, keep that in mind. Make sure you don't leave any keys, any belongings, anything in the vehicles if you wish to hold on to those items. And especially in store, you know, if you're going to 7-Eleven or stopping in somewhere quickly. Also, just, just another thing on, on the emergencies. If you're calling 911, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys can hear our band, right?
We can.
So if, if, if something's being dispatched to us, then the constables can also hear that. So before you even call them, they might be already coming because they heard it come over our band. So just keep that in mind.
Absolutely.
All right. What else? Anything else? Anybody have any questions for me?
Back here, Justice Cassay. From, from behind. So I would have emailed about this, but I just read about it about an hour before coming here. I saw that the Sleep Act, which is, was an act that was passed to increase fines for loud vehicles, specifically, you know, I think, you know, not just loud in volume, but we all know those vehicles that go down the street and sound like gunshots going off.
Sure, yeah.
So, you know, as, as a resident of Main Street myself, but also one who often is walking my dog around town, you know, these vehicles, you know, as, as is evident by the passing of this law, are quite troubling to communities like ours. And so I was hoping that the, I believe Suffolk County Police Department would be the ones enforcing those laws.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I don't know the law, so I'm not familiar with that. I'd have to take a look at it. So I can't really elaborate much more on it.
It's hot off the presses.
But yes, absolutely. The noise disturbances fall under our purview and that's something that we would be handling when it comes to motor vehicles and their exhaust or whatever noise coming from them.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
When you're living on a hill, you'll find that it's far more prevalent.
Yes, they like to.
When you live on a hill, because they downshift the vehicles down the hill and that creates that baffling noise.
So if you ever want to sit on my, your science real, if you have to.
Sure. Saghar, right? We had sagar incident last month.
Cigar.
Cigar, is that what it is? Okay, sorry. There wasn't arrest made from that. I don't know if that was reported at the last meeting. I know that it was under investigation and they had somebody ID for it, but the arrest, an arrest was made for that reckless endangerment, for that shooting. So just wanted to let everybody know that.
Although a member of the audience was commenting on that, we really couldn't comment on that because we knew that there was an ongoing investigation, so.
Oh, okay, all right.
Literally that night, the officer did mention it at the very end of the meeting, but we were asked to just kind of.
Yeah, sure.
In cooperation with Suffolk County PD, we do that quite often where we just not say anything and that's what we do, we keep it quiet.
I just have a question. When we have residents that are asking for patrols in their neighborhood, whether it be a stop sign, a light, or speeding, I often tell them to call the COPE number. Is that still the best way to get on that list for patrol?
Yes, it is. So I think you've met my counterparts in your, my partners in the office, Officer Moller and Officer Petrowski. So we are the full team in the COPE office. Obviously, honestly, myself and Linda Petrowski are the only two COPE officers for the 6th Precinct. Now, we are a non-enforcement unit. I don't know if anybody, if everybody understands that or knows that. We are a community outreach unit, a liaison for the community to the precinct so that you can bring your complaints to us. We then distribute them to the appropriate parties within the precinct. A lot of times in the patrol check system, when we enter this information, it's there for patrol officers to see. It's there for our enforcement teams, our CSU units, community support units. That's, that's what COPE was in the old days. They're the ones that go out and do the enforcement. So we take in the information from everyone, we, we input it in a system, and then we notify all of the lieutenants for all five working squads in the precinct. So this way they're aware of it. Yeah. But yes, in short, call 852, 852-8689. Yeah. Sorry, 854-8689, sorry.
Okay, we're still, we're on public safety right now while we have Suffolk with us and Chief, because after this, they're going to leave. And any of the comments with respect to public safety, we have to held, yes? For the record, please. Yeah, John, if you could step back and.
Yeah, sure.
Mark Cross, 11 Leewood Lane. I just wanted to ask in regards to a follow-up. We'd had some episodes of catalytic converter thefts. And recently, I guess there was a policeman who was killed in the Houston area. It just sort of reminded me when he had his, are we having any of that or does it seem to have passed in the area now?
Should I go up to the mic or?
Yeah, because we're also, this is streaming live, so we're trying to accommodate.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, so the catalytic converters have been a very hot topic. We've had quite a few of them within the 6th Precinct. They were hitting everywhere. We did custom notifications to all of our bus yards within the 6th Precinct to let them know. Would you believe, like, the next day they were hit? You know, not all of them, but one or two of them. So even with all of us notifying people and going out and letting them know that this is happening, it still occurs. Yes, there was an officer killed. I think he walked up on his own vehicle as it was happening to his own vehicle with his family. He was off duty, I believe. And I guess shots were exchanged and whatnot. It is happening around here. It's very easy, it's very quick. They go in with a battery-powered sawzall, they go right under your car, especially if you're driving an SUV or something that's up off the ground a little bit more, you know? They can just slide right under, cut it out, and off they go. And to my knowledge, it's some kind of metal in there or the metal itself that they're looking for, for, for value, so.
Do the lock boxes that you can put on your vehicles, do they seem to work? Some type, sort of, of a box or a lock that you can put on the converter? I'm not an automotive person, but I've heard.
I have no idea. I don't know. I don't know. And I've never heard of it.
Okay.
I think that's very expensive. I guess you need to have to get a key.
Yeah, you'd probably have to, yeah.
My husband had to do that on his, his, his company vehicles because they were constantly being stolen. So he had something put on, and I didn't know if you had experience as to whether those actually work and.
Yeah, I have, I have no experience with that, yeah, so.
Any other comments with respect to public safety? Anna, I see you've joined us. Do you have any comments you want to say on California for Chief and/or Suffolk while you're here? They're here.
102 Hawthorne Street.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for the trailer. Are we allowed to receive the results?
We were all waiting.
Once we're done with that?
Yes.
Again, as for the, when they welcome the community, the dog walkers say they observed the, the cars basically rolled through the, the stop sign.
Yeah.
And particular problems with the now Old Town Road.
Old Post.
Old Post.
Yeah, yeah.
That becomes more of an issue now rather than just the, the California.
Yeah.
And the question did raise, rises into the community whether there was a consideration for a engineering to look at the, at the neighborhood and potentially the whole village because since I started participating in the military and making news, they were very much a silly argument.
With, with respect to California Avenue specifically, I think that it would be prudent to just wait, get all the data, we'll create a report, and we'll share that. And then I think we can go from there.
I, I don't know, I don't know when the check was created, but I, we do have 60 checks up to date. So officers have been going there and checking. Obviously, we're not going to, it's not easy to catch everyone at all the times of the day. I think in general, over the years, we've seen an influx of people coming into Suffolk County, Port Javison. So we have a lot more traffic out there, and we're still working with the same number of police officers that we did so many years ago. So it's a little difficult to put our thumb on these problems, but we're doing the best we can. I can assure you, that information had got, got to me and was put into our system right away. And again, it's really, it's really up to the patrol guys and our CSU teams to go out there and do the enforcement. Now, you have to be mindful of the fact that they're battling 911 calls around that. And they may just be driving through that area and posting a check because that's all the time that they would have had during that tour. You know what I mean? So, yeah.
Again, I want to express my gratitude for the fact that you, that you go out there and I fully appreciate the fact that there are a lot more issues that you are dealing with. That's why I keep coming back to these meetings and returning back the questions to the, to the mayor and the trustees because I haven't had, haven't worked with the police department and the public safety in other countries. I fully understand that it's a really intricate and intimate relationship between the civic side, civil engineering, and the, and the public safety aspect of it. And, and for the reasons I feel that the police department has to do a lot more than they're supposed to allow for, and this is where the civic engineering and the, the citizens are, are dealing with, the, 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 the people and the subjects with cultural issue or cultural driving and with the, the, the demographics and the use of the street.
Agreed. Okay, thanks.
Any other comments for Suffolk and/or Chief Lute? Thank you, gentlemen, for attending and making, nice to see you too. Enjoy your April. Nice to see you back, John. Okay. All right, so now, I just have a, Brian, is your, is Brian's budget also able to be viewed online? Because I don't have any slides for Brian. So is Brian's budget accessible in the back of the room for, of this? Okay. So Brian, since you're here and Denise is not here, unfortunately, she had a family emergency, do you want to, this is the first time that I believe the board has seen your budget.
No, that's.
Yeah, if you want, you could, if you could kindly come up to the microphone. I'm not sure you need a microphone, Brian, but just if you want to give us some highlights, things that are happening that are great up at the golf course, you know, there's a lot of people who think golf is, you know, a dwindling sport, but since COVID, it's, well, and I don't want to take credit away from you. I mean, all the work you've been doing on our course to improve the play and the facility, you're correct, COVID helped us. Right.
There's very few to say that, but helped golf a lot.
Great. So if you just want to give a recapitulation of your budget and the nutshell version?
Yep.
Thank you so much. Just before you start, this is what's known as an enterprise account. It doesn't have any consequence on the taxpayer. This is a self-sustaining facility. The membership, the guest fees, cart fees, tournament fees, all pay for the expenses, improvements. A few years back, when there were not such great years, the Village of Port Jefferson did lend money. You've fully paid us back, thank you very much, and then some. And the fact that you don't have tennis this year really doesn't impact because the membership fees from tennis pretty much offset those expenses. So this is all about golf and turf, pesticide and everything else. All right, Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, so as the mayor said, since COVID, we, there's been a huge uptick in golf, which has actually affected our budget. So we don't have very many different budget lines, very similar, but a little different on how things are run. We had some staffing changes and the flow chart kind of changed a little bit, and we're now staffing the course correctly for the amount of members and play we have. So now we have a full-time starter and a full-time ranger who, you know, we make sure everyone has paid their cart fee, their members, they have the correct membership tag for what time of day or weekend it is. And then we check out the course, make sure everyone's acting accordingly, you know, picking up their garbage, fixing their bunkers, and stuff like that, where we didn't have many of those in the past. So those numbers have rose as the play and membership revenue has allowed it to, to rise. The maintenance staff has also added one or two people over the past two years to make, you know, to fix all this stuff. Divots and all the play we have adds a lot more maintenance work to the course. So those are just some changes due to the amount of play we have. This coming year, we've seen an uptick in materials and fuel. So everyone knows fuel, that's a no-brainer. Materials, lucky us, Russia produces 21% of the ammonia in the world. So that's a lot for fertilizer. And I believe it was 19% of all US purchased fertilizer, fertilizers come from Russia. So therefore, we have seen about an 800% rise in materials. That's a lot. So luckily, we have an early order process that I take advantage of to save money that has really helped us this year, where we do our ordering in October before a lot of this crunch came. So we're okay this year. This budget is from June 1st to next year, so we have, you know, budgeted accordingly for those increases. And the only really new line is an annual course improvement. We have a master plan about five years out. Some of those things coming up are cart path improvements, which would be a capital one time where they're going to do either the entire course or nine holes at a time, where it would be, you know, a, a large sum. The other, the number one thing on membership in our Greens Committee's minds are the bunkers. It's been eight years since our bunker reconstruction. During that time, we, we moved things, renovated the golf course. The bunkers themselves still have something else we can do to them to help sand contamination and the walls of the bunkers stay where they are. Over 30,000 rounds a year, these things break down. So while we wouldn't do a major capital improvement plan with that, we can do three or four holes a year on a smaller scale. And we wanted to work that into the operating budget so it's a known fact to the members and they can see these things yearly, slowly but surely improve. And they've, the, the CCMAC who, you know, is on board with this master plan, that was their number one concern.
So I'm, I'm sorry, in the, you can go through your presentation, but I just wanted to ask a question about that. So, so I'm looking at expenditures, so did you create a new line for that? And if so, what did you budget for that?
Yeah, so that's the last line in the golf maintenance section, and it's.
Because I think we just got a summary, not the itemized.
Yeah, so it's called annual course improvements, and it's $42,000.
Okay.
And specifically, just for the board, when this does come up after the CCMAC, the specifically bunker project, it's, it's called the capillary concrete. So the bunker is shelled out. We've already done the drainage, we're not moving any bunkers. So the major cost was already done eight years ago. This is shelled out, drainage checked, flushed, because it has been eight years, just checked. And then it's a sprayable concrete that keeps all, like, sediment and soil at bay. So right now, we have rocks and soil that come up and it messes up the sand. So that'll, it, it drains and it lets the sand that you put back in stay perfect, pretty much. This process is used for the past five to 10 years at pretty high-end courses, and now it's becoming kind of a mainstream construction. Yeah, so that's, that's the only added budget line. I would say as a summary, we're very conservative with our revenue expectations. We have hit the numbers that we're putting in this budget already, and we have two months till May 31st, which golf is just starting now. So we have guest fees, cart fees. We've also taken over MGA handicaps, which is a fee that a golfer would pay to see how they match up to another player. This was actually done outside of the club. So in this budget, while we're taking in some, there's also an expense to the MGA every year. So we are making money per person, but it kind of rises both sides. The same thing with pro shop sales. We've done very well with pro shop sales. It raised the revenue. We got to buy more stuff. Same thing with the pesticides. There's an early order program. Last year, because of the shipping and freight and everything that's backed up, we ran out of bags, hats, balls by October. So we have, we, me, I have heavily purchased things already to last the entire year. So again, we're making more profit, but you're, you're going to spend more. So both sides of the budget rise.
With, with, with a net to the plus side.
Yeah, a very healthy plus side, which has been great the past couple of years.
So Brian, already with the proposed budget, you're looking at bringing in 2.297 million, and you're already at 2.411 million, and it's April 4th.
Correct.
So any surplus you're still putting away into capital accounts? I know you're putting your nets up on both sides of the driving range.
Yeah, so that's, if I can speak, I guess, but like.
Please.
So as we've, we paid back the fund that we owed, we were also able to do driving range nets, which are just completed this past week. We waited till the spring to put the nets up. This will actually lower an operating cost of range ball purchases. So we were losing all these balls, now we're going to hold those in. So a lot of our improvements like that are kind of lower operating costs. If we can get a piece of machinery that we can do in-house instead of subcontract someone to do an aeration, it's a number in here, but then over time, it saves us money. So yeah, like I said, the cart paths would be something that that capital fund that's building would be hopefully used towards in the future. And I, I think we're probably the best shape since I've been here 11, 12 years is the best shape we've been in, so.
I have a couple of questions. I see, I'm looking at the Cupola Cell Tower rental went from 30,000 in May of '21 down to 25,900.
That's a Denise question. She put some numbers in the budget before I even touch it.
Okay.
So that would have to be for her. I'm not, I really don't know.
Which line are we at?
It's the fourth one down. Cupola Cell Tower Rental, why the rental price would have gone down from 30 to 25?
Yeah, well, it's probably just a, a more, you know, I don't know if that's a set monthly fee. It varies, I think.
It depends, it could be a carrier that, that came off, might have reduced whatever antennas sometimes, you know, technology's getting smaller and so if they have three antennas, they could go down to one more powerful one as opposed to three.
Okay.
There is a technical reason, we still have to, that's, that's, that's amount of modification.
Okay.
On part of the Village?
We, the board does, the board agrees.
And then my other question was on bag storage.
Yeah.
That went down significantly by $8,000. Did something change there from May of '21 to the proposed?
About halfway down of age.
Yeah, about halfway down.
Was that 18 went to 15?
Yeah, so.
And then back up to 10.
Some, what, some things where we're very conservative, that seemed like an anomaly because of the year before and after it, what we budgeted. But actually, we've actually built more electric charging stations, which we bring in more revenue on.
But they take.
I don't see that number going down. That might just be us.
I think they take more space.
Being very conservative.
What do you mean?
I think your electric car.
No, we.
Take more space, and so you have left, left for bags or?
No, we actually, we renovated the entire basement this year from years past.
Oh, great.
So we actually, we came up with like 50 more spots for storage.
Okay.
So that's, that's actually something to look at. That's a good eye.
I'm wondering if.
That's a quick good eye.
I'm wondering if the rates, if you decrease the rates for storage or?
No, we actually increased by about 20 bucks.
Okay, so we should probably check on that, then.
That's interesting.
Significant, right? 18 down to 10 seems.
Yeah.
Like a big jump.
No, but I mean, it still says a 15%.
No, but his actual, his actual is 15, so his budget should match. Right, Brian? Your actual number is 15 so far this year. 32122? But that's from last season, right?
Actuals as.
Yeah, I just, the actual of 18,000 last year and then 7,000 the year before, we've honestly, just being on the conservative end, I think we might have just went low. But that's, it's probably too low.
Okay.
Honestly, a lot of these are probably very low on the revenue side. It's just better safe than sorry. And, and just for everybody, I think everyone's aware, but we're, we're kind of guess, you know, not guessing, but we're really using a lot of these numbers before we even get into the season for next year. We don't, we, we don't know our whole membership number yet.
Right.
And we're budget, you know, we're doing pretty good at this thing, but it's, there could be.
So.
Yeah.
Let me just, because this is so confusing. People who are joining the golf course paid this year, and you're doing the budget for next June, and those membership fees come in during the winter.
Yes.
So you're making projections for a, a membership based on not your current, not what you're getting right now.
Yeah, so everybody coming in.
The country club is, it's.
Is only has two months left in the budget, so.
Yeah.
If everybody decide not to play golf this year, we could be in trouble.
Right, and that's why you go a little bit more conservative.
That's what happened, yeah.
Any other questions? So what, you know, the country club, you know, they, the season is, you know, now till the end of December, but we have, they have to run on the fiscal calendar to match the Village's calendar. So it gets a little tricky for them, but they've been doing really well, exceptionally well. Any questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian. Enjoy your season. Did I have to officially open the hearing, or did I kind of do that?
Well, you have the budget, you can call the board.
Okay, okay. Just, you know, I don't know why I get, all right. So now we're going to move on to the, the operating budget for the Village of Port Jefferson. I'm sorry, I'm pinch-hitting for the treasurer because she had a family emergency today. She had to euthanize her family pet, which was unexpected. So we're going to just walk through some overview slides. I think everybody has a packet from the back table. Budget is extensive, and we're just going to hit some highlights. We're not going to take it into the, the tall weeds. Brian, Kevin, are you hitting the bar space for me? Who's directing traffic? All right, let's go to the next slide. Yeah, we need to change the cover because we still have standards of the deputy mayor. Hello? What cover are you looking at? Oh, the official budget? Yeah. No, I know, but not on the, not on the presentation slide. Barb, can you make a note of that? Okay, thank you. Wow, we're already, we get to slide two? Okay, slide two. Most important thing I want everybody to look at is, you know, the budget has increased from 10,187 to 10,593. But when you look at the numbers below, revenues increased from 4,13. revenues increased from 413 from 362. I'm just going to give, I'm going to go, and that's an increase in revenues of over 467,000 from outside sources. And although there's going to be a tax increase, the actual money we're collecting from the resident base, the tax, tax, taxable base is going down by 61,000. And welcome to the what we describe as LIPA. Okay, so the tentative assessed valuation you'll see was 20 million four, 20.4 last year uh due to the decline and LIPA coming off the assessment rule, we're at 19.926. I'm just going to do big numbers like that. I'm not going to count all the numbers. So when we look at trying to raise the amount of money that we need for the budget, um, it it translates into um a tax per 100 of the net assessed valuation is 33.394, which translates into an increase of 4.5%. The reason why we have these rev, these increase in revenues is we we got from the federal government, something known as ARPA funds. This is the bucket of money that the Democratic administration gave out for infrastructure. And we we got a chunk of that money, a little over 400,000 this year, and we're getting another chunk of money for it in the next fiscal year. And one of the things that we have to shut do is we, and I I don't really agree with this accounting method because I think it's showing a false inflation in the budget, is we have to put it into the operating lines and then pay the expense for that. And you'll see as I go through the budget, but that's not going to, that that line is not necessarily going to be that line forever. Okay, so but m- most important thing is although the budget went up, it's really from getting revenue from outside sources. And your taxes unfortunately have to go up, so we can just sustain the status quo. If we did nothing else and we rolled this budget over, the impact from LIPA and our uh union uh contract would be alone the cost of this budget. Any ban or bond money being discussed by this board is not going to impact until the next budget cycle. Okay? So let's flip the flip the page. That that to me is like I gave you like the best nutshell version of that I could give. Oh, oh, if we did nothing else, the percentage would have been about 7% just to roll the budget over. But we're keep, we're applying this ARPA money and helping offset any increases to the resident. Really? Next one's supposed to be a a pie chart? What? Is it too hot, your computer or something? Uh-oh, it's a good thing. Oh, you're streaming. There you go. Oh. It's all right, people. Sure, your next bud, your next slide is basically just a, you know, we take some of the general numbers and we put it into a pie chart. And you can see that 41% of the revenues still come from the tax base. 25% is still coming from LIPA. Uh, state aid accounts for 8%. Um, and then it kind of dwindles down into these little tiny pieces, building fees, utilities, recreation fees, village center rental fees, court enforcement fees, parking fees, and rentals of village facilities. So, you know, even though we work really hard at trying to offset any increases by increasing revenue lines, the bulk of the budget is still borne by the taxpayers at 41 and LIPA is still bearing 25. Next. Okay, so then we get into some generalizations um of line by line items, just going to go over some of the highlights. Um, down midway down the page. Why do I have a different page? Yeah, go back one. Okay, thank you. Um, just going to jump to some of the larger percentages. Mostly you can see we try really, really hard at keeping it at zero, which is what we describe as a rollover budget. On this slide, you'll see um, we do have an increase in revenue from our public health fees and vital statistics. We got a lot of people coming in unfortunately for birth and death certificates um down in the clerk's office, very active. Um, a 40% increase and Kevin? Just keep your finger off of, don't touch it. Uh, park and rec fees, um, th- this is also just a a an anomaly because we moved um, we broke out camp fees and made it its own line instead of having it in programming. So it's not an increase per se, it's just a new line. And so it had had sort of impacts in the budget. Uh, kayak permits, we're collecting some, you know, higher uh fees for, but it's only 7,500, but it's looks like a big number because it's 32% increase. Um, Barbara, how many kayak rental permits did we have this year? Poof, people loving kayaking. Um, and again, don't forget, this is revenue, folks. So 43% again in the camp. It's just a new line. We were, we were already making that money in our recreation department. Next slide, please, Kev. Zoning and planning board fees, a little bit of a bump. They're active up there. They're doing larger um applications, which call for sometimes larger um application fees. Um, interest earnings, we uh did refinance and we saved a bunch of money there. So uh, we're paying less interest on the debt service that we have. Uh, court fines, we have found that this was a little bit of a false number, that 500,000. I'm sorry, I'm I'm moving too fast. Uh, we brought that back down to be a little bit more realistic and into a 450. You know, and we've been making significant changes in the courtroom with new technology. So I think this year, when we're back in business full time now out of the pandemic, we're going to probably see in this budget cycle a good, real number. And unclassified prior years, insurance recovery is a little bit up, uh, you know, with the insurance company paying back for certain losses. Uh, next slide, this stuff gets really boring. Uh, per capita, per capita state aid stayed flat. We don't get any state aid unlike other municipalities like such as school districts. Uh, mortgage tax uh bumped up. Uh, we had a budget for 370. We're reaching for 500 right now. The the money that actually came in is 484. We still, I think, have a quarter to go, so we're doing really good with the resale market here in the village. We get a uh piece of the mortgage tax when anybody takes out a mortgage to buy a new house. Uh, consolidated highway aid, uh, really would have been thanking the treasurer right now because the more roads we pave, if we apply for the state highway aid, we will get reimbursed. So that number went up a good portion. Every single nickel of that goes back into the roadways. Uh, we we probably, uh, at this point almost paved, I would, I want to say 75% of this village during my administration. We've been doing a lot of roadways. Um, and here's one of these false numbers. Federal aid, there's $100,000, uh, which is 100% increase because we're taking that federal aid. We're plugging it in there and we don't actually know what we're going to apportion that money to yet, but we're just have to say that we've, it's income. We have to show it. Um, and total revenues then balance out at 10 593 804. Okay? The next pie chart is appropriations, which are expenditures. Of course, the big item for us is personnel, 3.85 to support the staff. Contractual at 34% is their the health dental benefits that staff receive. Equipment debt is at 3%. Debt service to pay bands and bonds is at 7%. Oh, I'm sorry, employee benefits is at 20, 20%. Contractual, I think, is um, Brian, what what's contractual? Vendors and.
Service contract.
So, okay, supplies, things of that nature. And interfund transfers at 3%. Yeah. Okay, next. We'll go to some of the line items. Uh, first increase was the mayor's salary, a board of trustees and mayor's salary. Uh, 86% and 69% to bringing us in tune with the rest of the villages on Long Island and compensation for board members. The other item, 7% is personnel service, traffic violations of the district attorney. Uh, the next page. Next page, any increases in expenditures here were pretty normalized at 2 and 3%. Down the bottom of the page, uh, we had uh some personnel and contractual services. Some went down, some went up. Uh, utilities, I think, is the culprit on that line, uh, going from 146 to 175. A 9% increase again, we're looking, seeing increases on utilities and fuel costs across the board. Next page. Code enforcement bureau, we held them to a zero. Traffic control, zero. Uh, on street parking, which is the um managed parking at a neck, went down a little bit. Safety inspections went up 15%. We have a part time and a full time fire marshal. And this is where the building inspectors salaries are located as well, Joe? In safety inspections? This is several staff members at the building and planning department, fire marshals. Um, could be at where Allison's salary was as well. We still have to figure out what we're, who we're having run that department. Next page. Street maintenance, uh, tad bit of a reduction. You can see this is the DBW department, salaries, equipment, contractual expenses again as fuel, sand and salt. Garage expenses went up a little bit. Again, that's uh probably fuel related and equipment related. Snow removal went up a little bit, a sand and cost of sand and salt definitely going up. Um, keeping our outside vendors, you know, the trucks that come in and help us remove all the snow. Street lighting uh went down 17%. Uh, this is a direct benefit from the LED project that was funded through the savings and the the cost of lighting, our street lighting throughout the village. Uh, that 17% reduction is a a uh savings in the maintenance, uh, having to call the outside electrician because now everything is up and working. Uh, sidewalk, you see a great uh increase here, and this is again some of that ARPA money. We're putting in the contractual expenses from 40,000 up to 150, so there's another 110 of the the ARPA money. So it came in and we're spending it. Um, and again, that's a one time shot. I'd love to have more money in our sidewalks year round. Just as a sidebar, any money, residual money at the end of the year, if there's a a surplus, we usually take all the money from the DPW department and put it aside towards sidewalk and paving. So we do have a capital budget as well, which we we sock that surplus around. We're actually getting to the a little bit of a dwindling uh number in the in the paving area. Off street parking contractual expenses um went from 40,000 to 100,000. Just see if I have a note on that. This is our leaf program. Our leaf program, uh, we're looking at bringing in some heavy duty equipment to help us mulch and break down all of the uh debris that's collected and put into the landfill that's up at the country club each year. So we're putting some of this new ARPA money in into that to make sure that that gets uh managed properly. It's a DEC permit we have for that land uh fill. Uh, personnel services held even and uh economic development held at even. Next slide, please. Uh, parks department held at a 3%. That's all our personnel and their their equipment that the parks department has to, you know, keep, maintain our parks and beaches. Recreation, again, another kind of a false increase. We had a tennis pro uh that was on the country club side. We shared and we took on the full um, you know, employment of that tennis pro, but we have the increase in the revenue side where you saw that increase on the revenue side with the programming. Uh, so there's no real impact to us. A village center a negative, uh, we've been trying to manage um some of the staff there um and maintain our equipment. So you can see some of the contractual expenses are down. Uh, beaches, uh, we are looking at trying to minimize uh the staff necessary to run the beaches and the kids. That's down 20%. Uh, trying to find a, we have a nice Sharon, if people know Sharon. I, how do we pronounce it? Philbrick, X. Philbrick. Uh, she'll be our beach manager this year. Um, celebrations held a little bit. That's our fireworks celebration for the Fourth of July. Next slide. Uh, planning department, so this is personnel. Uh, these are largely your planners and probably the senior court clerk. I'm sorry, clerk typist who's up in that department. Contractual expenses are supplies and things of that nature. Uh, slight uptick at 7% on the staffing number. Environmental, uh, this is a grant writer, holding that line at zero. Uh, we are hoping to find a new grant writer as the board discussed downstairs. Or sometimes when you hire these outside agencies, you have to pay them a flat fee to procure the grant and then they get paid through the administration of the grant. Uh, storm sewers here again is another uh 50,000 we've added into the equipment. Uh, contractual expenses, we've added money there um to increase. Um, and again, this is ARPA money we're using for the storm sewers. Big projects coming from the new DEC MS4 permits on storm drainage and all that stuff. Um, street cleaning, personnel services, uh, we put another $7,000. Uh, we need to some more part timers down here after the long weekends to help clean up. Equipment went up 10 and contractual expenses a little bit. Um, and I'm sorry, I can't answer the why that is, but Denise would have known the answer. Let me see if it's on the page here. Oh, leaf overtime and sanitation. Yeah, the leaf program. I know you people really like us cleaning up your leaves, but it's really expensive. Really expensive. And beautification, uh, we're looking at getting some more planters and really helping our friends uptown, making for a better streetscape and purchasing some concrete planters and some concrete tables for the uh green space created by the by the Gap Park. Next slide. Uh, New York State retirement system, we thankfully found some savings there, went from 516 down to 460. Uh, we uh within each department, we've had some of our senior staff retire, um, which, you know, there's a downfall. You have to pay them out their vacation. Uh, but the good news is your contribution then to the New York State retirement system is reduced. Um, we've been trying to, uh, you know, promote from within and really uh spread the work out amongst the remaining employees instead of bringing in a new hire. Uh, pension system also likewise is going to go down a little bit. That follows in suit. The rest is sort of contractual, social security expenses, workers comp, really very little control over those um until you get down to accrued leave benefits. Um, we add another 10,000 there. It's 100% increase, but it's a small number. Uh, bond principal, um, you see there's a slight increase there and that is, I'm trying to find the line. Uh, ban interest. So there's going to be a a $35,000 interest payment on the ban um this year. And that line increased solely for that purpose. And the interfund transfer, um, this is, we have a surplus here in the village, approximately 1.7 uh of our budget, million is stowed away. Um, that's a great number according to the comptroller's office is exactly what you should have with the the amount of money that we uh manage every year. Um, and we use a little bit of that to kind of uh do a fund balance. Uh, each year, the village has closed out fiscally in a healthy uh, a healthy um end of year closing. You can see the total at the bottom of the page. Right now we're at 8.9 and the budget was for 10 187. When you'll hear me at the meeting saying we had a great warrant, that's how much money we actually spent. And I think this year, uh, because we did have a spending freeze and we, you know, we're still dealing with the pandemic and lost of, loss of some of our programming revenues. Uh, I I still think we're going to close without having to dip into that fund balance, so. Next slide. So our debt service, uh, many years ago, we borrowed seven and a half million dollars. Uh, outstanding right now is a little over 3 million. Um, after the budget cycle, it'll be 2.5. We have a public improvement bond of 720. Um, we pay towards that each year. And then we have a 2.24 bond anticipation note um that we pay 240,000 towards each year. And you'll see when I go over the capital projects, you'll see that a lot of the projects that we complete, we have to pay for them and then we get reimbursed by the granting authority. Uh, so total debt service um is 5.7 and it will be 4.8. Next slide. So the impacts that we have to manage on a year to year basis, um, that this year, the decline in the LIPA assessment resulted in a gap of, you know, year to year of 122,383. And that's the number that Kathy Ann and I were talking about. If we just wanted to make. If we just wanted to make up that number by taxing the village residents, it would have been a seven percent tax increase. And we didn't, we don't want to do that. We're always trying to find ways to increase revenues or slim down the expenditure side to save some money. Personnel services, the collective bargaining agreement. We're only paying our employees a one percent tax increase, I mean, I'm sorry, a one percent raise. It's been a tough collective bargaining time for them with LIPA and everything else. These people work hard here and we bring these people in at, you know, the salaries, entry-level salaries to compete with the town and these other larger entities. You know, I'd like to pay my people more than that. Increased ban interest payments while maintaining, you know, the two hundred and forty thousand dollar budget paydown for the first ban. And again, we'll go over that a little bit more in detail. And the need to repair the infrastructure, the facilities, you know, potholes don't go away by themselves. Next slide. Managing tools, as I said, I touched on reallocating staff. Not relocating them, reallocating staff within the department and village-wide by reassigning job duties instead of bringing in new hires. This will reduce impacts on payroll and expenses. I think we just saw that in one of the, you know, realized that in one of the slides we saw on the retirement and the benefit packages. You know, we've done a lot with trying to lease street maintenance equipment. And this is a really good program because, you know, the street maintenance equipment doesn't, it gets banged on. It works hard out there. But, you know, we've been really working well with Steve Gallagher up in that department and Joe is a welcome addition, helping to manage, you know, the budget and trying to get on smarter programs, getting our equipment and staying in good shape. Fleet management offsets the cost of maintenance. We, our mechanic, Joe, retired after, my geez, I think seventeen years with the village. We have in-house, another great mechanic up there. And we're very fortunate to have an in-house mechanic at DPW and a mechanic up at the highway, the country club, working on all of the equipment for the golf course. We maintained a double-A bond rating by carefully managing the finances of the village and having strong reporting from the auditor each year. Increasing revenue efficiencies through online payment options for tax payments, court tickets and village-wide programs. I think just about anything you want to do right now, if it's joining a program in the Recreation Department, we really made it easy for us to pay online and that goes right into the bank. Less cash being handled by your employees and more efficiencies for the consumer. And of course, securing grants wherever and whenever possible to help with the infrastructure upgrades. With grant, granting agencies like to see result, they like brick and mortar. Next slide. Bottom line, despite, I'll just read this because it's, despite the dramatic loss of revenue, we continue to manage the village implementing a spending freeze and strict oversight of all village resources. We do have a procurement policy here in the village. It's pretty strict. This year, the spending freeze, anything, any time a department was spending more than five hundred dollars within the department for any one particular item, they had to get their liaison, their trustee and the Joe or my approval to do that. So we're trying to do a lot more with less. Continued to advance the capital projects while, you know, maintaining our village properties and assets. I think we're doing a pretty good job at that. Overall impact to the average household with the village tax bill of fourteen hundred, they would be seeing an increase of sixty-three dollars this year. And that's, you know, less than as expected from the reductions in LIPA taxes, sorry. That number probably would have been doubled if we did nothing but roll over the budget. Proposed budget provides the necessary resources to continue to manage the village without impact to the quality of life. And, next slide. I just, these are all the capital projects that we completed in twenty-one, twenty-two. And in my opinion, that's a pretty impressive list, given the fact that we were still struggling with revenues in a pandemic. But sometimes these projects are the result of many years of work behind them and now the project's, you know, shovel-ready. So paved a bunch of roads. We went over our CHIPS reimbursement in the budget. First phase of Station Street installation, which is, you know, the new Confor project of town. All the utilities have been relocated and the drainage is in place for Station Street. Part two, which will be the paving of that road and the installation of the sidewalk and the lighting, will be when the building is getting its final CO and ready to be opened. Highlands Boulevard retaining wall, we paid for that through monies that came in for that bond anticipation note. And the East Beach retaining wall was also a bond anticipation note. Those two projects were upwards of seven hundred thousand dollars. It is not cheap when you're doing that type of infrastructure. The East Beach retaining wall definitely needed to happen. That was in real bad shape. DPW expansion, we borrowed money to build it, but this is a grant we got from Senator Laval. It's known as a DASNY grant. We're going to be getting, I think it's either three hundred and fifty or four hundred thousand dollars back on that DPW expansion building. So that money, when it comes back in, we put it back into a capital project. Or we pay down the ban. Rocketship Park bathrooms, again, we're renovating now, but that's a community development grant from Suffolk County. I think the grant was ninety-five, the project's a little over a hundred and ten, right, Joe? Something to that effect, so, but, you know, ninety percent paid for by somebody else. Village Hall bathrooms, we redid the bathrooms downstairs. Again, another grant from Suffolk County to make those bathrooms into unisex bathrooms and completely upgraded. We have a big project on Longfellow and Brook Road, these drainage projects. They're serious when they come down the Pike. That one was approximately eighty thousand dollars for the village to repair. And then, of course, we did the installation of the Village Hall vestibule. Necessary improvement because of, you know, I know there's a mix of opinion, but I think our staff and people who frequent the building feel much safer and comfortable. Now, last slide. The twenty-two, twenty-three capital projects, of course, we're going to continue to pave. We have roadways that we're reviewing right now with the proposed budget. I usually don't make a final decision until I see how at the end of the year budget is and then we try and throw in a few more streets when we're on the positive side of things. We have a bunch of sidewalks that are being bid out at this point in time for repair. Port Jeff Country Club bluff, a big topic for us to consider. The Recharge Basin at Oakwood Drive and Old Homestead is a must-do. We don't have it, we don't have a choice. That's probably a million, nine hundred thousand dollar drainage project. Yeah. Closer to a million, yeah. See how hard I work for the nickels and then Mother Nature just takes it away. Digitization of our records, this is a grant that we have from the Town and Brick Haven. We've paid for it. We will get reimbursed approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Rocketship Park walkways, we have a grant for that. We're currently working on redoing all of the walkways at Rocketship Park. It's all the brick inlay, kind of uneven. And also Harborfront Park walkways, we also have a grant for that. So those are the projects they'll probably be working on this year, getting them ready for bid. And they'll probably be projects that ripen into next year's spring projects. So we can report on them at the next budget cycle. All right. Does a member of the Board Trustees have any questions? Bruce? Is that on the revenue side? Yeah, payment in lieu of parking fees. Payment in lieu of parking fees? So that's when people, you know, yeah. Yeah, it's on page. Can you go to the third slide, I think, Kevin? It's the third line down, it says Pilat. And that's the, it's three hundred and eleven thousand, it was two hundred and ninety. One more slide, Kevin. One more. It's the third line from the top. For property taxes, power plant revenue. And then you see the pilot. That's contractual based on.
I don't know. I could find out, but it's going to be quite a while. I think it's got to be.
I think it's three or four years because it was, but we'll definitely look into that because I don't think that pilot, that power plant is not, that peaker is not going anywhere. Any other questions from the board? Okay. Nope. Any questions from the general public? For Myrna. I'm sorry, for the record, I apologize. Can you hear her? Kevin?
You mentioned a landfill.
Yeah.
What is put, I'm not sure if you mentioned exactly what is put in the landfill.
It's brush, leaves and fell trees.
Okay, but no plaster materials of any type?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
No. It's, we have a DEC permit and it's, because we manage our own leaf and branch program here, all that material has been in the years past picked up and put into that landfill. It's just to the right of the driving range. If you ever go there, you see this sort of, it's like a pit. But it's DEC, five-year permit. We have to show that we're managing it, maintaining it. And we've brought in some heavy-duty, large grinding machines that will do a first pass and then a second pass on the material to mine it, break it down. This year, we took, last two years, we actually took the leaves to chip it all instead because we were trying to manage that landfill, keep it open and manage it better.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Every once in a while, we will see a random something in there that we, we have cameras now on it. Any incoming and outgoing trucks, it's only village employees and village licensed vehicles that are allowed to be in that area.
It's my hope in the future to explore, instead of those fees that we're paying to drop these leaves and whatnot off at other places, looking into compost system for that area. It's a, it's a big leap with the DEC and all of this, but trying to implement something that, you know, instead you pay one person and have the equipment to turn that over so that, you know, the composting is more efficient and we don't have to bring, to pay to bring that material somewhere else.
Anyone else question on the budget? Yes, Anna? You know, the project is not going out to public referendum. Right now, there's a bond anticipation note that the Board of Trustees approved to take out last November. And we're doing that phase by phase pending major grant money that we're getting from hopefully the federal government and from also Congressman Zeldin's office and State Senator, or US Senator Schumer's office. So we don't have the impact of that yet because it's going to impact the next budget. That's correct. Hey, Ryan, how are you? You okay? Okay. I can see. Any other questions? Motion to close the public hearing? All in favor? And motion to pass the budget? By Deputy Mayor? Passed second by Cassay, all in favor? Thank you. Lot of work and I, I really want to thank our treasurer. She's really doing a fantastic job. And I, I hope you appreciate the amount of work that goes into what we try and do before we actually raise the taxes, which is exactly what the kind of things that we're doing before we see the full impact of the, any work on the Hill, let's just say. Going to go into, you guys want to do public comment now or do you want to do reports? Okay. So let's do reports. Bruce, you want to start, my far right?
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. I've been working with Kevin Wood, Kevin. We are approaching the Long Island Railroad on several items concerning Kevin. We're looking to take over the parking lot and we would maintain it and then meter it. We had in the past, as I had mentioned earlier, a conversation here with Phil Ing, the head of the Long Island Railroad. Unfortunately, Mr. Ing has moved on and the, the new head of the Long Island Railroad is Catherine Rinaldi. This is an interim appointment, as I understand. So I don't know what the future on that is going to be, but we've asked for a meeting with Ms. Rinaldi. It would regard this issue. And I've also mentioned in the past that we want to see what the progress is on the spur from Oyster Bay to the, to the main line there. There's battery-powered, it's experimental. It's an extraordinary expense to add third rail electrification. There is no access for diesel to Manhattan presently. We talk about Penn Station or in the future, when we talk about Grand Central Station, when that opens up. So this would provide for better access, better schedules. Some of the schedules we have are pretty bad here. There's a couple of good schedules in the morning and a couple coming back, but the rest are problematic. I spoke with the village attorney regarding a property in Port Jefferson that is quite substandard and derelict. And we've had conversations with that. And they are moving ahead with going to the Supreme Court in Suffolk County. We had won at this level against the homeowners, but they had appealed and we're moving on. We feel we have a strong case on that. I spoke also, I've gotten, you know, some, some letters asking about the progress of the Mather expansion. There's going to be more building space, more activity, therefore more parking, therefore less trees. So I did discuss their plans for that. There will be further discussion in public. So this essentially ends my report and I want to thank the public for coming out and that's it.
Thank you, Bruce. Rebecca, trustee Cassay.
Thank you. All right, so just following up on the Mather Northwell Master Plan, which I've been keeping the public apprised of the public hearing dates. The next public hearing is this Thursday, the seventh, at six o'clock PM. It is virtual. I saw a Newsday article come out and said that it was at Village Hall, but to clarify, it is a virtual public meeting accessed by going to portjeff.com/virtualmeetings and going there. And so that, this is the second phase of the public hearing. The first one was held and recorded virtually. So any interested parties can go on Port Jeff's YouTube page and view. It's quite lengthy, but very worthwhile to watch. The Conservation Advisory Council is looking to coordinate with the Architectural Review Committee on additions to the Port Jeff Village Building Guidelines. These would be green additions and they've been working on this for a few months. So I reached out to trustee Staden to discuss inviting them, inviting the ARC to the CAC's meeting, which will be virtual April nineteenth at seven PM and viewable on our YouTube page. The Port Jeff Village Community Garden had its gardener orientation. And there will be a gardener village, a gardener volunteer work day on April tenth at nine AM. And we'll be meeting there to fix up the fence after the winter. Knocked down just a part of the deer fencing, but easily stapled back up and generally beautifying the area. of the deer fencing, but easily stapled back up, and generally beautifying the area and planning further beautification for that parkland on Beach Street. All are welcome to join, it's not just, just the gardeners. The Six Acre Park Committee has continued its work. It had its first in-person meeting after having many virtual meetings, so the public is welcome to always sit in and attend, you know, and, and view the in-person meetings as well, but as has been the whole process, any public comments should be submitted via email to me at trustee-cassay@portjeff.com. Those are all being put into a public input document, which the committee reviews monthly at its meetings and discusses any and all comment and questions from the public there. The next meeting for the Six Acre Park Committee will be held on April 26th at 6:30 PM here at Village Hall, and we'll be having a discussion with a design engineer to, you know, walk us through the process of building a park and making sure we're not missing anything as a committee. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Rebecca. Kathy Anne, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, right here. I had a meeting with Angelene from the Long Island Explorium downtown as a kickoff meeting to the Maker Fair that's coming to us on June 11th, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. All kinds of exciting things coming to the village for that event. If you haven't been to it, you know, please get out there and go, bring your kids, your grandkids, your neighbors' kids, just get there because it's, it is very impressive. The robots, the fun, hands-on experiences, it's a very nice event. We are, we need volunteers for that event. Angelene said that that is one of the biggest issues that they have in putting this on. They're looking for 80 to 100 volunteers. Yeah. Mostly adults. Kids can volunteer, ages 15 and up, but they really need adult volunteers. So, if anybody has some time on that day, that's again, June 11th from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, please reach out to myself or to Angelene at the, at the Explorium. Arlington Avenue being closed since September has been an ongoing issue that I've been working on tirelessly with our Administrator Joe Palumbo and our attorney and the mayor. So, the latest update on Arlington Avenue is that the state has presented a design, has shown us that this design includes removing that sidewalk, which does currently go across Arlington. The state decided to do that. We still don't know why, but they have agreed to take it out. We are asking them that we will accept nothing less than them putting it back in the condition that it was prior to them putting the sidewalk in there or better. They have agreed to do so. We're told that it's going to be upwards of a million dollars for, for them to correct their mistake, but that it is going to happen soon. I didn't have a date, I don't know, Joe, if you have a new date since we spoke last?
I do not have an actual start date. I know, I was talking to you this morning that they were out on that corner.
Okay. Let's hope. And I, I'm part of the School District Capital Committee. We have a board member here, welcome, Ryan. We met outside of the, the committee with the, the school board as a smaller subcommittee to kind of get our heads together around prioritizing the issues at the school after a thorough walkthrough of the different rooms and the areas that are there looking to improve. And we came to some sort of a consensus. A report was put together by the Chair of that committee that is actually, as we speak, it's being presented now, tonight, to the rest of that committee, to the Superintendent and the rest of the board. So, that is for the school's bond that they will be requesting at some point before the end of the year. Did you have a question?
I think vote, vote, anticipate a vote around October?
We have to wait until after the election season, so it could be.
Okay.
So, we're working on that, and you can get more information through the school board and through their website. There's going to be, something that I asked for and the Superintendent was in agreement with, was that there were going to be multiple open house-type tours of the school district. I highly recommend you go. Myself, as an example, when I saw the list of items that needed to be done, I'm thinking, how can it possibly be this expensive and is it really needed? I was blown away at the terrible, terrible conditions our kids are, are experiencing at the school. I had no idea it was that bad, so I really highly recommend that when they have these open houses, please go and take a look for yourselves and make your decisions on, on, you know, your feelings on that bond. And I was honored to step in for the mayor. She was, had other engagements, to present a proclamation to the cast and crew of the ferry, the Grand Republic, who stepped in in January to save the life of an 18-month-old child who fell on the deck, hit her head, and was unconscious and not breathing. I met the Admiral of the Coast Guard and the rest of the Coast Guard crew that was there to present their award. I was there with Lee Zeldin's office, and it was, it was a wonderful experience to, to represent the village, to present this proclamation. It was very nice, and the little girl was there running around and, you know, the star of the show that day, and their golden retriever puppy was there that they named after Captain Strom from the ferry. So, that was a happy ending. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy Anne, thanks for pinching. We had a really great volunteer recognition evening last week. We recognized approximately, we have approximately 140 volunteers that help us make this village go around, members of the Planning Board, Zoning Board, Architectural Review Committee, Conservation Advisory Committee, Country Club Management Advisory Committee. We invited also our not-for-profit partners, Lisek, the Conservancy, the Explorium, the Arts Council. Recognized Brian Herger for helping raise money during the pandemic for the, the food pantries, the Historical Society, our historian. We have so many people who volunteer their time, so we've done this, I think, we try and do it every other year, of course, you know, 2020 did not allow that to happen, so we're really happy to get together, acknowledge them, and we have had a nice evening and we broke bread together, so I want to thank those volunteers again. We have a new senior program provider, she's going to be joining us at the Village Center. We want to make our Village Center a place where seniors can go during the off-hours, the 10 to 2, when the kids are, we have the before and after-day school program there, so that those hours of 9 to 2:30 are a little quiet in the building. So, Senior Care Provider is going to be introducing art classes, maybe a little bingo for our seniors. We do have a senior program every Wednesday from 10 to 2, and the group largely just sits and plays Mahjong, and we're trying to like introduce some other fun things for our seniors to do, bus trips, programs, guest speakers, and hopefully she's going to have a six-week trial period with us, and hopefully she's a home run. She used to work for the War's Edge Nursing Home up on Dark Hollow, so she's familiar with our community, and I'm really looking forward to seeing her there and giving our seniors the boost they need. Met with the Drown Meadow Cottage Museum Committee, largely that's Chris Ryan, our historian, Georgette Greer Key, who's a professor of history, and she's going to be working on the accreditation of that building, the Drown Meadow Cottage on the corner of Barnham and West Broadway, making it into an official, you know, New York State-approved museum. Mark Sternberg was there who founded the Letter of Importance. He's the young man who is studying history at the University of Michigan and found that letter that put us on the map as a, you know, cornerstone to the spy ring, the Culpris spy ring. And Tara Penske, a resident of ours, is volunteering her time as an educator and a, and a history buff. So, we're going to be having a ribbon-cutting there on June, June 5th, it's a Sunday from 1 to 4, with the rain date of the 12th, and sort of reigniting that building or reopening that building. There will be permanent exhibits and programming then going in on that building moving forward, and it's going to be a really fun day. I'll remind you about it again, but I want to recognize them as volunteers and the work that they're doing for this community. Harry Faulkner, former trustee, Commissioner of Fund, we all love Harry. He is our Harbor Commissioner. He represents the village of Port Jefferson in an organization where there's a member from Oldfield, Polquatt, Port Jefferson, Belterre, and the Tonnerbrook Haven. It's the Harbor Commission, and they're really looking out for the health of the harbor, the impacts of the harbor, and they met with George Hoffman, who is from the Satacet Harbor Task Force. Rebecca, that's the organization you want to get involved in. Okay. And was happy to report that our, our report card for the cleanliness of our harbor far exceeds, and it is in fact number one on the entire North Shore, from the Five Burrows all the way to the East End. Really awesome report card here. This group has done tremendous work for the harbor, and the really cool thing they're doing right now is they're planting sugar kelp out by the, the mouth of Satacet. They start on a piece of string about six inches long and so wide, and they grow nine, 12 feet long and three feet wide, and they're using this, it's oxygenating the water, it's making it healthier for oysters, and it was really interesting information. We're looking to probably task these, this committee or this Harbor Commission with the ability to go seek funds because DEC is going to be requiring more and more mandates. Hey, Mark, how you doing? It's good to see you. Good. So, it's, was a great report. Harry's doing a great job. He's going to continue on representing the village in that, in that role. And the next meeting is April 13th at the Marina, the Tonnerbrook Haven Marina Building, 4 o'clock. Mr. Hoffman will be there talking to the commission about looking forward for money to help us keep that harbor nice and clean. Joe and I have met with Representative from Mr. Zeldin's office, Mark Woolley, who is his Chief of Operations and Staff. We're seeking discretionary funding from Mr. Zeldin's office as well as Senator Schumer's office, up to 10 million each to, to assist us in repairing the bluff and any upland decisions we make. They're touring, FEMA's touring with you this week, Thursday, and then the Army Corps of Engineers is coming in May, correct? So, ongoing, ongoing projects there. And the last thing I want to report is Uptown. Deputy Mayor Snaden is going to step my shoes again. She's invited to tour the Conifer One building, to go inside and see how it's shaping up on the inside. I'm really jealous. Yeah. And the good news is Conifer Two will be making their formal application to the Building and Planning Department. They're going to be continuing that project from the contiguous wall to the corner of Perry, and they've had a lot of pre-submission meetings with Jen Siegler up in the Planning Department, but that's really great news to see that the state is continuing to support the redevelopment of Upper Port. And be mindful that we might see the demolition of the building on North Country Road happen. It could be this month, it could be next month. They're just, they're really just waiting on one more of the utility companies to give them permission, but that, you're going to see a lot of things happening uptown, which is very exciting for us all. And with that, I will open it for public comment. Mr. Robertson, how you doing? I'm very well. Perfect timing. Mark, could you state your name and address for the record, please? I can't answer that question because I'm not, I can, I can get back to you because that should be part of their, the site plan designed for that property, correct? I will, I will look at the site plan and get back to you. You're welcome. Okay. Anybody else? Motion to close the public hearing? Myrna?
I just want to bring up the idea and issue of not having more public interest for the bluff, what's happening at the bluff. And for me, I'm just really completely disappointed to know that the residents didn't have more notice, didn't have more public notice. I know that there was a small noise put out, but with something so big and a project so big, to have such limited outreach from our village officials is really not acceptable at this time. We get public notifications from our school district, from our budget, we get public notifications from others, but it just seems that this particular issue, that the ball was dropped. And this has been an ongoing situation now for like five or six years. There are pictures of the bluff since 2017 that have showed the deterioration, aerial shots, and, but now it seems that it's crunch time. Hopefully, there will be funding from either the state or federal or however. That would be, that would be the good news, but how terribly disappointed I am that most people in our village don't even know about it.
Myrna, can I speak to that real quick?
Yes.
So, I would like to ask you and the public, how else can we, do you feel we could get that out to you? Because so far, we have had newspaper articles put out about it, we have had it in our newsletter multiple times, which comes directly to emails and is also on our website. We have put it out multiple times on social media. We've had public, a public presentation that the mayor made that was noticed in the newspaper and was here in this room, some public attended. When we also have, the engineer did his presentation online, and that was public as well, and those, all those recordings are on our website and our, on our YouTube. I don't know what else we could do, so if you have suggestions on how we can get people a little more engaged in the issue, I would love to hear it because we're, I think we're doing as much as we can do.
I would disagree with you, Trusty Snaden, in that when anyone gives outreach, it goes on computers, okay? And on visual presentations, on those on computers. Residents do not log into portjeff.com and go into those explicit video meetings. They have no idea what's going on. Secondly, I really truly believe that we could do this good. Every single resident, homeowner, business owner, could have had something written up to them. I've received nothing. Now, if indeed you did put it out, then I'd like to know. No one, according to my people that I've spoken with, have ever received something in their mailbox, which would have definitively given you the, you know, the reason to say you. I just think that more could have been done, and unfortunately, I want to say in closing, you do very, very good things. And when you do good things, I say that, I know the time that went into the budget. I know all the time that you spend, okay? And that's not forgotten, but when there are.
And, and for us to have to take that long to get these permits from the DEC and the Army Corps was a real problem. And I've said that over and over and over. So when we finally got the permits and we, this board approved those plans to go out for bid, you know, that's when we voted in November to say this could possibly cost $10 million. And nothing was done under the table or secret handed or whatever, however you want to mention it. But meanwhile, we're watching the bluff deteriorate without any ability to shore it up. And I feel my first and primary responsibility is to secure and protect the assets of the village of Port Jefferson. So I feel very strongly and completely authorized in the steps that I have taken and my, and what I feel is in the best interest of this village, to protect the assets. And this board will continue to make those decisions. They voted 5-0 to bar the money and 4-1 to give that project, uh, a, a go-ahead. And we are turning over every stone possible to try to not put that burden of that repair on the backs of this, of the village residents, as I've done with any of these projects, whether they're walkways, bathrooms, or the, the main wall that saves our parking lot. As a $1.8 million project, I, we've got, we had to build it. We preserved our beaches, we preserved our beach access, and I got the money from FEMA. And I'm not going to put my head down and rest until I have unturned every single stone to protect our village assets. And I appreciate you, and I, and I know what you're saying, but it's such a complicated job with so many things that are making it every day. It sucks the life out of me practically, Joe. We're so, like, it's, we're talking with this agency, that agency, this person. You know, now we're looking at the vegetative plan for the upland. The upland projects will be decided by this board. When the plans are finalized, and I've gathered all that information, we'll make that public. And you'll make a decision on whether or not you want to preserve a country club facility that has been one of the five crown jewels of this village that people speak about. And we'll, we'll weigh it, we'll pluses and minuses, pluses and minuses. But one of the things that we have in this village is a country club. And when they go in and sell your homes and they, the realtors go and they show your properties, Michael, I'm, they'll tell you, every single one of them, they drive people through the country club, and people say, wow, what a beautiful place to live. They choose to live here for the great schools, for the amenities this village has, and I will, so long as I'm in this chair, I will work as hard as I possibly can to preserve each and every one of them to the best of my ability.
As long as you all remember, Margot, that it is a public park area, that it is a private area, and I thank you and I appreciate you, and I appreciate all the work, everything else, and I'm always giving you the opportunity to do that.
Cheers. Mark, I knew you'd think of it.
This lot out here, that's half village and half citizenry. Why can't we make it a whole village, since you put that other one across the street?
Yeah. We're looking at the parking administrator. We'll take that under consideration, Mark. Yeah. No, I mean, you know, the parking lot at Barnum is free, it's open. We're trying to encourage everybody to park there who come to visit and play at Rocketship Park, and make more available parking on the outskirts and not these primary spots. Um, and we'll take that under consideration, because I know our residents, although you can park anywhere you want, it's tough to find a spot down here. And it used to be all resident, so we'll, we'll take that under consideration. You're welcome, Mark.
I don't want to give away, uh, it's not a secret to keep, but, uh, it, in off-hours at Village Hall, residents can park here behind Village Hall, correct?
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, that's, um, to those in this room and those listening online, that's always been my, uh, secret, you know, can't find a spot downtown, uh, it's off-hours, you just park behind Village Hall.
Yeah, this is resident only as well.
So that's a, another nearby place to, to seek a spot.
Ms. Mark.
I think, Trustee Stane, what I was trying to say, or did say, is that, on issues that are important as the block, to follow us, however it's defined, however it's studied, it touches every resident, every business owner. So I don't know what social media is, and I don't rely on getting all of my news on the internet. We used to get mailings from the village once or twice a year. And initially like that, I think what you're asking, and I'm the second, is to mail things. So we get things from the library. We get things from fire department, we get things from the school board. I pick it up, I have to do something. I can read it, I can throw it away. It's just clear. And we didn't do that on this issue, and I think it's important. And I think that that should be...
Yeah, I'm going to say that in a minute.
And I think that this is an important issue, and I second also, as I just said, that there should be a public forum, because things are said and misunderstood or not understood, and some people are left out. So the two things, the mail things, if it's going to have any effect on your...
So in order, in order to save money, we put it in the newspaper in the edition that went to all the households. That is a, you said you wanted it to go to the households in a mailing?
From the village.
That is from the village. It was a full, it was a full, it was a letter from the village.
Right, Michael, we've partnered, just let me explain. We've partnered with, no, no, let me just, we're not arguing. We're, we're not... We, we have made a commitment, can I just, can I, because now you're kind of screaming. We made a commitment with our time speaking record that once a quarter, what, let me ju, and at, once a month after the E-report, we do a full page, so people get used to seeing us in the newspaper. And that, once a month, the paper commits and we help them, send that paper to every single household. I understand what you're saying. You want something like this. Village of Port Jefferson, I get it. I get it, I understand. Okay, all right.
Because people, they throw out everything. They look at it and they're like, oh, they don't know what it is. Not interested in that.
The time speaking record is not interested in, that is not interesting to them? Can be, okay.
They can, they can throw out a direct mailing. I mean, at, at what point are we...
At all points, I mean, they're not asking, the village can do a mailing, and they can live in the village, so we know. This is something that we got from you. I don't, anything.
Okay, everybody has their opinion, and I appreciate yours. Thank you. We'll take it, we'll take...
If they have an opinion, they're totally allowed. But it doesn't make one have...
Well, yes, we, we thought about that, and we, we...
The other, just because they have it.
We thought about that, and we decided that the best way to get it into all of the residents' hands in the most cost-effective way for the residents was to do it as a direct letter published in the newspaper. I'm not referring to the articles in the newspaper, I'm referring to the village-written, direct, I, I don't know what you want to call it, it's a...
We, we, we give them, we give them the copy. It's our newsletter that goes in the newspaper. And there was an edition that was completely dedicated to the bluff, but we'll, I'll, I'll make it into this, and I'll send it to the, to the house. But the issue that I have, Michael... Please, I'm, I'm really trying to, this issue is so complicated, okay, that it's, you know, to try and put it all on a direct mail piece, I'm, I'm hoping you do, because it was, we, Charmaine is sitting in the front row, she writes our E-report. No, 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 I know, you don't like to hear E or internet or any of that, right? Just to get, just for me to be able to communicate with her, like, the, all the information on it was like different the next week. It's, it's a, it's a very complicated project. And, and so I can give you a summary, and I'll, I'll send it to everybody's household, and I'll let them know that next year, this could be the impact in the budget. But again, it's all conjecture until we actually know what those impacts are. But I appreciate it.
On November 25th, I was out of town. We had, with it as residents, 30 days in which to look at, after looking at that notice, to go around and try to get 300 names on a petition so that we could have a referendum. The 30 days left, you mentioned it there in one of your readings, and as a consequence, there'll be no public referendum. I think that was unfortunate. I don't know if it was a coincidence that it was, came out on November 25th. 30 days from that is December 25th, people are busy, they're out there. I even missed it. So it's an important issue, and now we're told we cannot have a public referendum. It would have been nice if the note had been sent to every, you know, it was either in the paper or in the...
And, and I have to just say, Michael, for the record, your, your concern about an increase in your tax bill, is that your, what your concern is?
Why?
Okay.
It's why? I'm interested in having a public question, a forum, and a vote, if we could have. Now, you said, you said in the meeting on February 20th, February 9th, saw it online, and you were trying to, you're asking, you're, if we want packages together, whether on the vote, and now, considering the election, we could have too. I don't know what's going on by that, but it's...
Right. But unfortunately, that's before I learned that in man, in, in order to be able to get the work done within the permit guidelines, we would be going, if it went out the pu, there's reasons why I, I've, I, we, if we went to public referendum, then we would have to go out to bid. Then we, you can't go out to bid and then not grant the contract until you have a public referendum, then you don't know your pricing. I mean, and then the, the, the bid is, the permit's going to expire, and, and the whole project falls apart again. It's a very time-sensitive project. I don't know, I don't think you do.
The note, the, 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 the,[1449.13]